Just an update for you at this point.
Questions from board members for Mr. Baki? Mr. Clevon?
So, the overall reduction is about $280,000. But with your statements there, we're budget matching the services that we normally fund? With that, to be matching this new budget?
Correct, yeah. So, we're able to expend it to a, to... There's no, there's not going to be any additional dollars within the general fund, let's put it that way. Which is, we worked really hard to do that, and I'm happy to say that we were able to accomplish that. However, one of the main reasons we were able to do that is because some of our Avid work. You know, previously, Avid was a new initiative within the district. Now, it's become kind of a staple within our district with the work we've been doing. And so, now, it's been more allowable to be funded under Title II because we do provide professional development for Avid. We have a coordinator that does that work, and so, we're able to expend some of her, some of her salary and benefits out of Title II versus Title IV. When it's a beginning initiative, it was out of Title IV. Now, we continue to do the, she provides the professional development for that program, and so, it comes out of professional, or Title II.
And you mentioned that there was a position that went from a coordinator to a director?
Correct.
Did we anticipate that we would not be able to fund that out of Title IV money when that decision was made?
Correct, yep, yep. And so, we, through that, that helped balance that budget to a certain degree.
Other questions, Mr. Clevon, before I open this back up? Okay. Other questions from board members for Mr. Baki? Okay, thank you. 4B, NDSBA opportunities for board member development. Dr. Brenner?
Thank you, Mr. President. You can see a memo from me pursuant to Grand Forks School Board Policy BE. School Board members are here notified of the following opportunities for board member development sponsored by the North Dakota School Board Association, otherwise known as NDSBA. There will be, on October 9th, a new member learning to lead workshop. I don't believe that's going to be applicable to anybody around this table. The school law seminar will also be held on Thursday, October 9th. And then, the annual convention, school board convention will be held on Thursday and Friday, October 9th and 10th. It actually starts the afternoon of the 9th. All events are in Bismarck, so if you are interested in attending, please let Cindy Johnson know as soon as your schedule will allow, and she will make arrangements for you, for your hotel stay and your advanced travel request, et cetera. No action necessary today.
Any questions on those development opportunities for Dr. Brenner? Yes, Mr. Clevon?
Does anybody here, like, maybe this Davis directed you, do you recommend that any of us attend? Like, the law seminar, would there be value to the board as a whole if some, some of us did attend it?
I think there's always value in board member development. If, if you want additional information about the specific law seminar piece, I couldn't speak to that. I've not attended that part of the convention. Maybe others around this table have, or Dr. Brenner, you could speak to that directly. But I know my development opportunities at the state and the national level have both been tremendously beneficial. And, and of course, there's the, the information, the knowledge gained, more tools in the toolkit. It's also about collaboration and connection with colleagues in other districts. So, let that be my more than gentle nudge to, to take part if, if it fits, for any board member, if it fits in the schedule. 4C, school board compensation discussion. The memo came from Dr. Brenner. I think we're all aware of, of where, you know, where we want to take this conversation tonight. Dr. Brenner, do you want to start us off before we open it up to board members?
I think the only framing I would do is you had a conversation at your last meeting, and that policy was, was polled and no action was taken. And the suggestion was, let's bring it back today for a conversation to see how the whole board feels about it. And then, the, the board would give the policy committee direction when the policy committee next meets.
So, with that, does any board member wish to get conversations started? There's some additional information in your packet. You can lift up your notes from that, or any thoughts as you've had time to, to process. Again, those of us on Policy Review Committee are eager to hear what direction you'd like us to go. So, let me know who, which of you would like to go first? Ms. Lynn?
I have a clarification on Dickinson. It looks like it reads that there's a flat rate and a meeting rate. Are those combined? Do you know, Brandon?
I, I don't know here without rereading it. I think that was exactly the way it was phrased here, so it didn't clarify.
Okay. Just looking over everything, I think, in my opinion, it would be fair to see like a 1,500 or 2,000 increase for board members, and then, the vice president and president follow suit. Seems to be pretty in par, or on par with a lot of the other school districts and the commitment. I think we might have a couple more committees than some of these other ones, but it's my feedback.
Thank you. Other board members wish to weigh in? Mr. Palmesino?
My only question on the Bismarck is, it just says, uh, president and the vice president are the only ones that negotiate? Other board members? It just says negotiations, usually board president and vice president. That'd be a good one for us to do.
I have not recognized any motion on the floor.
Yeah, that's kind of what it looks like on that, like, they take it, so. Personally, I've always considered this as public service, so I've never, you know, worried about. When I first ran, I didn't know we got paid. I didn't even, and it was $25 a meeting, so it wasn't a whole lot. But that's how I considered it all, just public service, so.
Other board members? Dr. Lund?
My, my only comment, because I'm on Policy Review, so I'll get to look at this again with Sherry and Davis, is I think it's a little hard to compare all the various districts because they're, they're not apples to apples. They're apples to oranges and pineapples and stuff, just because there's different numbers. They have different roles, and when you talk to them, if you, if you go down to the National, go to School Board Association meetings and talk to them, you know, the roles are different, and the roles in smaller districts are different. So, it's, it's a little, I, I think it's good information. I think we should always be looking at this. But it's not like we're comparing apples to apples, like, you know, a nurse that does this exact same thing as a nurse that does that in Fargo. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a little different, so.
Other board members? Ms. Flynn?
Just to articulate too, a babysitter going rate these days is about $20 an hour. So, if that gives an idea, and, and I'm looking more so at the prospect of, at the time when we have turnover on the board, if we have families and people that need, who want to step forward and who want to serve, not everybody who can serve is in an equitable position to do so. So, you know, some of our long meetings, it could be 80 to 100 bucks per kid, and that also means committee meetings and things like that. So, if that helps articulate, you know, I mean, if we're getting, you know, four, $500 a month, that's, you know, for time, and that doesn't go into preparedness and things like that too, but that's just the meeting. I mean, that's a chunk of that being taken out for one meeting, so. For those not familiar with current going rates of babysitters.
Others? Dr. Hodak?
I don't want to give everything out that I've been doing, but I've been doing some research on board compensation for, for the nation, because I've also, you know, been such a part of North Dakota. And really, they're saying that we need to look at the purpose of the salary increase, and if that purpose is to possibly, they called it equalize the people that would run for the board or go out on the board. If that does indeed impact why they're not, or why they won't stay on the board and things like that, then all the research is saying then you should increase. But from that, there are 13 states that have said, no legislation they've made it law. No school board members can be paid by the districts. So, I think there's, there's huge debates about whether public officials should be or shouldn't be paid, and for what the purpose is for what they do. They talk about some people on boards have a personal agenda, that they come and then they leave the boards. And so, there's a lot out there that I can't, I'm excited to talk about with Eric and with Dave when we're sitting down. But if you do any reading up, you will see that it's a hot topic, but right down to even the safety of board members. And so, that adds to it and such. So, I think there's a little bit more, but looking for school districts that have just policies based on this is when we're going to get a raise or how we're going to do it. The practices are all over the gambit. They're, I mean, people would probably be looking at ours, you know, to say if we did come up with, it's going to be every two years. It's going to be this, it's going to be, you know, some things like that. It was interesting, and then I'm going to quit, Los Angeles, which is one of the largest school districts. They pay, if you don't have a job and you're on the school board, $155,000. If you are on the school board and you do have a job, you get $55,000. So, and their, their readings is that they would prefer to have people be on the school board as full-time positions. So, it's, it's all over, so. But we want your input. So, anything that you can say tonight, we will take that under advisement.
Other board members? Mr. Clevon?
I do struggle with the value statement here. I'm with Bill. I didn't know we got paid until I got my first paycheck. And maybe that's more of my indifference to detail on such matters. But I think it really speaks more of typically someone's going to take on an assignment like this because they want to take on the assignment. So, I'm starting with that, though, with what I do think, looking at this data here. I, I think we are kind of undervalued if we are relative to our peers, given the number of committee assignments we all have, meeting cadence and all that. So, I think an increase is perfectly reasonable comparison to peers. I think it should be the next time we negotiate with teachers and administrators. So, start that cadence when do our next negotiation cycle, not necessarily right now. But I do, bottom line, I think an increase is reasonable.
Other board members? Dr. Lund?
I just want to remind the board that this isn't your last shot at this, that whatever the Policy Review Committee comes up with, it comes back to the board for discussion and approval. So, so, you know, you'll have, you'll have more ability to, to discuss further depending upon what, what we outline.
Other board members? Mr. Larson?
I think, kind of to Amber's point, if, I think it's appropriate to, to do some raise. I don't have any strong feelings in what it should be, but I think it should be sooner than later, and not necessarily to tie it to the negotiation session, because if we're going to attract good candidates this next election cycle in whenever it is, January, I think if we have a, you know, the knowledge of this is now a $7,000 position to where it actually covers, you know, some babysitting and things along those lines, I think that would be something to get the right number of the right kind of candidates to participate. So, I would rather see it happen sooner or whenever the election next term. But not necessarily wait another year or two to implement, so. That's my thoughts on it.
Other board members? Not sure we've heard from everyone. Want to make sure we've got plenty of opportunity, not only for every perspective to be heard, but also for the Policy Review Committee to have all the information we can. Is that you again, Mr. Larson?
Yeah, one more comment. I do agree, board or chair, vice chair, or whatever, president, vice president, having an increase is appropriate for the committee. That's, that's a warranted thing.
Other comments from board members? Other comments from board members? Okay, I'll, just before we move on, any other clarifying questions from Policy Review Committee members? Anything else that you want to hear more about, more feedback, so that you all feel equipped when we meet again to come, come back to the board with something? So, Dr. Lund, Dr. Hodak, anything else that you want to raise up, you feel all right? Dr. Hodak? Same? Okay. Move on to 5A. This is your consent agenda in the packet. I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined. It's been moved by Dr. Lund. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Clevon. We'll take a roll call vote.
Palmesino? Anderson? Lund? Flynn? Larson? Manley? Clevon? Hodak? Berger?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no, zero absent.
Motion passes. 5B, contracted staff resignation and release from contract, Lindsey Hansen. Dr. Brenner?
Thank you, President Berger. You have a memo from me, and attached to this memo, you're going to find a letter of resignation effective August 8th, 2025, from Lindsey Hansen, fourth grade teacher at Winship Elementary School. And Ms. Hansen is aware of the liquidated damages. She was aware of that before, before she submitted her resignation. So, the administrative recommendation is to grant Ms. Hansen release from her 25-26 teaching contract effective August 8th, 2025, with the enforcement of liquidated damages under policy DKBB.
Questions for Dr. Brenner? Seek a motion to grant Ms. Hansen release from her teaching contract, 25-26, effective August 8th, with the enforcement of liquidated damages per policy DKBB. It's been moved by Mr. Clevon, second by Mr. Manley. Any further discussion? We'll take a roll call vote.
Larson? Palmesino? Clevon? Lund? Manley? Anderson? Hodak? Flynn? Berger?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no, zero absent.
Motion passes. 5C, contracted staff resignation and release from contract, Justin Lil. Dr. Brenner?
Thank you again, Mr. President. Attached, you'll find a brief letter of resignation effective August 7th, 2025, from Justin Lil, special education teacher at Valley Middle School. The administrative recommendation is to grant Mr. Lil release from his 25-26 teaching contract effective August 7th, 2025, with a waiver of liquidated damages under policy DKBB.
Questions for Dr. Brenner? Mr. Clevon?
So, the, we just approved release of contract with liquidated damages? This one's recommended without. What's fundamentally different of the two?
I, I would say without going into personnel details, that would be the difference.
Other questions for Dr. Brenner?
And personnel difference not related to relocation?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions for Dr. Brenner? Seek a motion to grant Mr. Lil release from his 20-25-26 teaching contract effective August 7th, 2025, with a waiver of liquidated damages under policy DKBB. It's been moved by Mr. Anderson. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Larson. We'll take a roll call vote.
Manley? Lund? Larson? Palmesino? Hodak? Clevon? Flynn? Anderson? Berger?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no, and zero absent.
Motion passes. 5D, general fund financial statement. Mr. Baumback?
President Berger, members of the board, this is just for the first month of the current fiscal year, so it's one month, and it's awfully early, as you can see. This reports in the cover memo that the first month of fiscal year, 25-26, has a total fund general, general fund revenues were just over $8 million, and the total general fund expenditures at 2.8 million, resulting in revenue over expenditures of 5.2 million. You go through the two reports, and one thing that will become apparent, maybe in the first one, but onto the second one, is that the state sources came in a day early. Most often, most often, they come on the first of a month, and sometimes they show up on the 31st. And so, when you look at the comparison report, it's going to look like we got a lot more state revenue this year in July than we had the prior year, and it's literally a day difference. So, you'll find this report is susceptible to those timing differences this time of year. So, there'll be some changes in that regard. So there'd be some changes in that regard. But you can see in summary that, you know, total revenues are about 6.2% of what's preliminarily budgeted, that we're still working on the final budget. So preliminarily budgeted, budgeted and expenditures for the first month are about 2% of that preliminary budget. Again, you go to that second report, the comparison report, that's where you can see this year at this point versus the year prior. And those percentages in the far right-hand column really jump around because of those timing differences. So on the, the summary sheet, you'll see it looks like our revenue is 10,000% more. That's what I just explained. But even in salaries, you can see year over year, right now, we're about 3% more than last year. That could be just a little bit of those timing issues or what's going on over these summer months. So that'll normalize as time goes on. So there's not a lot of a story. Happy to answer questions here, but you can see that's largely what's going on. The graphic depiction here also shows that in this current fiscal year, we have a bar in July for revenue that didn't exist prior. And expenditures are about where we would expect those to be. And then when you get to the general fund balance, that last page of this report, it really jumps up. That would be a false sense of hope if you believe that we were up ahead that much. It's just a timing issue. So I've said that a few times. I'm happy to answer any questions, but otherwise the administrative recommendation would be to approve the general fund financial statement for the period of July 1 to July 31, as presented.
Questions from board members? Mr. Baumback? Yep, Dr. Lund?
I, I take a utilities is also a timing issue with that.
Yeah, absolutely. Those bills were paid probably just on either side of that date.
Other questions for Mr. Baumback? I would seek a motion to approve the general fund financial statement for the period of July 1, 2025, through July 31, 2025? It's been moved by Dr. Hodak. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Anderson. Any further discussion? We'll take a roll call vote.
Hodak?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Manley?
Yeah.
Clevyn?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Pomacino?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no, zero absent.
Motion passes. 5E, consideration of child nutrition meal prices. Mr. Baumback and I'm sure some support.
Yeah, President Berger, members of the board, I'm joined by Director Wendy Manke of the Child Nutrition Program. I'm going to run through the memo just a little bit and some of those figures. And, and Director Manke is here for any questions that you have just about these changes. So first and foremost, I would just articulate, this is Fund 50. It's completely separate from the general operations from our school district. Has nothing to do with our general fund budget or things like that. It's separated out because we participate in the National School Lunch Program, USDA-supported program. And even when we make changes like meal prices, they're actually dictated by that program. And just as, as noted in the cover memo, we can't increase it any less than 10 cents per meal when we do make an adjustment. But on the, on the second page, you'll, you'll actually see some good tables of information and help put the, the recommendation in perspective. Largely the second table, the history of meal prices, it'll just be noted that since school year 2018, we haven't adjusted meal prices at all. It's been fantastic. We've been able to keep them right where they're at, that's some of the lowest in the state, which you'll note in the first table. But we do want to maintain our fund's health and, and keep that up just a little bit. So the third table is recommending a 20 cent increase for both the elementary breakfast and lunch, the secondary breakfast and lunch, and adult breakfast. So that would help us continue to maintain the health of that fund. We've been able to, and the, the final table would show the annualized impact per a family or per student paying. So you can see $17.40 over the course of a year is the difference per student being paid. The reason why we were able to not increase those dollars is, again, we've been, or increased the cost per lunch is we've been able to maintain a fund where we've actually had a healthy enough balance where we've been exempted from increasing. We're still in that territory. We have a healthy fund balance for Fund 50. But just again, by not having increased since fiscal year or school year 2018, we just want to make an incremental increase to make sure we stay ahead of food price increases. Again, we have an administrative recommendation in the memo here to increase elementary breakfast and lunch, secondary breakfast and lunch, and adult breakfast by 20 cents each. But I myself am happy to stand for any questions, as well as Director Wendy Manke with Child Nutrition.
Questions for either of those individuals from board members? Dr. Lund?
If I'm reading this right, even with the 20 cent increase, are we still the lowest in the state?
Yes, that first, that first table has a great summary of where we're at. And, and really ranging anywhere from 46 cents to 63 cents lower than all peers on average. And so this would, you know, decrease that substantially, but certainly not. And we'd still be the lowest in the state.
Other questions from board members? Mr. Clevyn?
So this Fund 50 is completely, any money within Fund 50 stays in Fund 50? Like there's no commingling at all with general fund or? So if that's the case, how are we able to keep such a healthy balance? Like what good, like it seems like something good is happening.
Well, it's managing those, so the Fund 50, it's government accounting where you have separate buckets by the rules of the game. And so the revenues coming into that fund are both associated with the USDA program. So if they change the rates for which they pay us, we could benefit for that. And then also any dollars being paid in to that, paid in by families for their, their lunch credits. At the same token, if, if families don't pay for the lunches, we still feed them and that can be a drag on that fund. But we've been in the spot where we've been able to stay positive ahead of that. I think able to even make a couple of capital purchases just to continually maintain facilities. Of course, those don't come in a scheduled fashion. You might have a, a good year and a bad year of when they break or go away and you have to replace. So you need to maintain a healthy fund balance.
Other questions from board members? Dr. Hodak?
I would like to commend you because when it comes right down to it, I've been in enough school districts where the food program, the hot lunch program, has just been the demise of the board. And we've had to use dollars from the general fund to support it and everything else. So when, Jay, when you said, how come, why are we? And I pointed right at her. That's generally exactly why we're doing so well, from what I've witnessed in other programs and such, including even our staff and, because I've looked at their salaries and such. And I think that we're, we're right on par. So I applaud her. And so that's why, in fact, my problem in letting this out to the public is the fact is that Bismarck and all these schools will see this and they'll say, who is she? Do we, do we go and grab and take away? Because I had that happen.
Other questions from board members? Ms. Flynn?
I can't put together a lunch for my kids cheaper than this. I don't know why my bill increases at middle school. Maybe it's à la carte, but I feel like my lunch bill is $8 a day at middle school. But I, I think these are fair. I also think that the timing is good when we advocated at the state level for help in paying for meals for families and we didn't get it. And now it's like, well, locally, we have to raise some prices. So I hope that maybe this data will continue to help talk about that narrative that kids have to eat and they have to eat healthy foods. And every time I've gone to lunch with my kids in elementary school, like it's a good, healthy meal. There's options to eat. Certainly anyone can say, oh, well, let's switch out this or whatever. But they, they do a really good job. And I think that these prices are very fair in comparison. And I just, I think that this could be helpful in going forward to our, our state legislatures too, so.
Other? Yes, Dr. Lund?
I'm just wondering if for the board's education, but also the public education, if we could just talk a little bit about how the free and reduced program works for, for, for this district?
Sure. And Wendy, would you be willing to answer that one?
I'm just wondering for our education and public education, how the free and reduced program works in, in our district? How kids get on it and how, how the district gets paid and stuff?
Now is it on? Okay, sorry. I should be used to this by now. So free, reduced, so we're really trying this year to push more applications online, which is MySchoolApps, just because it seems to be easier for all parties. And there's hard stops so that you don't really miss any information and you will get a faster result as well since if we don't have missed information, there still is paper copies. The state of North Dakota lowered the poverty line to 225, 225%, I think, or 220, one of those. So it was lower from the last two years. So then hoping we can catch more people that are right on the line or those families, just to try to help since, as Ms. Flynn had said, that the legislature denied our universal meals. So just anything to try to help with the families. You know, as Mr. Baumback had said, we still pay, or we still give a child a meal, even if they're negative balance or don't have anything. So they still get a whatever main meal it is. So we don't, nobody really knows either if they're on free, reduced, our screen just, it just comes up. They put in their lunch number and it automatically gets taken off. So nobody knows that either. Does that answer your question, Dr. Lund?
Kind of. So, so for the public's sake, so it's, it's a financially based program that, that parents, if, if they qualify first of all, they can get a reduced or even a zero rate, depending upon what their income levels are so that, that those kids don't have to, don't have to not eat. The families that may, may not be able to afford it. And it's a program that supplements that.
Right. And so you'll be able to find those dollars on our website, also out on the North Dakota State website too. But even if you feel like, if families feel like they won't get it, they should still apply for majority because of that state, 220 it's called now. So you might be surprised. I can't remember off the top, like a family of four, maybe $70,000 or something like that. So try to apply if they need it.
And this is an anonymous program. Those kids don't, don't wear a certain colored shirt when they go through the line. People have no idea about that. I think I've heard that comment multiple times, some families saying, well, my kid will be labeled. It's like, well, nobody knows that, so.
In, in our child nutrition department, Grand Forks Public Schools, nobody would know unless your student is telling everybody else. Like I said, on our food system, they just punch in their lunch number and it's automatically in there. So it, nobody even sees it. As many kids as thankfully we have go through lunch and breakfast, nobody's going to remember that. So it is all anonymous. Lowest are admin secretary, she processes those. She's not going to remember 7,600 students either. So it is totally call. I think this is most calls I've received this year. This is my fifth school year. How can I apply? Should I apply? I, you know, I want to put all my children on there. I mean, it's the most questions I've gotten. So I hope that it's getting out there more positive in the media or so that it, they're not going to know. So I, just to push that if you don't think you're going to apply or get it, then just try. Try anyways, so.
Other comments, questions from board members? Mr. Clevyn?
I just want to piggyback off what Dr. Lund said. Probably about, I would say, eight years ago, this board decided that we are going to not collect any leftover funds, that we weren't going to give out. You sit in the corner and have a some butter sandwich and we've maintained that. And so the history here for those who haven't been here as long, I, I think has, I've just been proud of this board for making that decision. And last report we had from you showed some lunch balances and it was double from the previous year. And I imagine that an increase is also going to add to that. But it's just something that we've said, we're going to try to reduce the costs for families, just like busing. And so I think the public also needs to be aware that, you know, those are priorities that we've taken on and fundamentally that we've said, we're not going to charge families. We're going to try to reduce the burden for access to education. And so, you know, when we talk about budgets and stuff, those are things that, that certainly impact our bottom line too. But this board has kind of remained fundamentally that we're not, we're not doing that. So just wanted to give that history.
Thank you. Mr. Clevyn?
Thank you. Just another, more questions about the fund, how it's used and it's, it's just how the money is allocated. Does it cover staff?
So, Mr. Clevyn, yes. So my budget covers labor and staff. That's my biggest expenses, food and labor. So we do try to watch that with trying to increase foods and maybe more healthy. I'm really going to watch this year to see how food costs and then how much pressure that puts on my staff to put that stuff out too, to see if we need more hours, if we need. But it's not something that if somebody just asks for an extra hour, because that's what they keep working, I don't just jump in and do that, so.
But that is covered by Fund 50?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, I'm pretty much funded by myself. I, you know, we make our money probably from Amber's à la carte. You know, it's an honor to feed your, your students. It really is. Well, it's really fun. I, I want to say that we, I want to believe that we really try hard to find foods that students of all kinds will like. You know, I can't please 7,600 students all in one day. But, you know, I comb TikTok and I listen to the other teenagers and do all that stuff. So I hope we can find something. And so I just tried to, with, along with the meal price discussion, it was if I want to get some of these, keeping in mind foods that I get from the state, so our commodity foods, kind of comparing some things with our vendor, our food vendor, just seeing what I can get for the best for my nutrition and my dollars. So I kind of take that all in count. But with those à la cartes and then with our reimbursable meals, if we put what's on the tray that we're supposed to, then we also get funds back. And so that's just how we can kind of keep generating. Ovens and hot boxes and all that stuff are not cheap. So we try to get on a 10-year plan, you know, and kind of keep things and look at things going that way. So try to be very responsible. If I have too much money, I get my hands slapped too, so I can't win. So it, it's kind of a fun, a fun challenge and to try to, you know, meet everybody's needs.
Thank you for the very detailed answer.
Yes.
Other questions from board members? Dr. Brenner, you have something?
Just, just three comments. First of all, I just want to commend Director Manke for running her child nutrition program like a business. And I think you heard that tonight. She does a wonderful job doing that in concert with, with Brandon. And what you also don't know is we've been short cook managers the last several years, starting during COVID. And it's not uncommon. As a matter of fact, it's more common for Ms. Manke to be jumping into those positions and leading. I think she spent a lot of time at Red River in, in the cafeteria there. So she's, she's doing double and triple duty. And then finally, just to address, and Amber stole my thunder just a little bit. But, you know, with some of those negative balances, we still have some opportunities for fundraising that does happen within the school district. The last day of the school week and professional development day is our denim day. And, and participants provide either 20 or $40, $20 a semester, $40 for the year. And all that money goes into a foundation line item that helps subsidize some of the delinquent balances. And I think we raise, you know, usually around 35,000 to 40,000 a year. Just people can dress comfortably on those days. And then Amelia Hodgson from the foundation would share with you that there are other private donors that help subsidize some of those balances as well. So thank you, Ms. Manke.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? So there's a motion to increase elementary breakfast, elementary lunch, secondary breakfast, secondary lunch, and adult breakfast by 20 cents each. Is there a second?
Yes.
A second by Mr. Clevyn. Any further discussion? We'll take a roll call vote.
Lund?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Pomacino? Larson?
Yes.
Clevyn?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no, zero absent.
Motion passes. Thank you for the report and for your time. Any final comments that you didn't get a chance to mention before we move on? Looks like your microphone's still on, so I just thought I would ask.
No, thank you. No, thank you so much, you guys, and thanks for listening.
Sure, thank you. Six A announcements. Any announcements? Dr. Brenner?
Just a couple. K through nine starts school on Wednesday, so I won't sleep tomorrow night. And ten through twelve starts on Thursday. I want to thank all board members who've been part of Open House and stopping by and making visits. I know principals and teachers appreciate that very much as well as support staff. And other than that, our fall sports, co and extracurricular activities are in full swing. So school year is here. Thanks, everybody.
Any other announcements? Mr. Clevin?
Segueing off what Dr. Brenner said, the first Red River Central head to head matchup is tomorrow night, boys soccer.
Do you have a time on that, Mr. Clevin?
Seven o'clock.
Thank you.
JV starts at five fifteen.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Six B board requests for future consideration. Any board member have anything? Six C school board meeting norms. Ms. Flynn, how did we do?
Amazing.
You heard it here. And we are adjourned.